Okay, Ms. Susanna.
All councilors present with Councilor V. Hill and Councilor Carson previously requesting to be excused, a quorum has been declared.
Thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval. Councilor Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda excusing Councilors V. Hill and Carson.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Susanna.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. This is the part of the agenda where we have audience members who's filled out these comment cards to come up to the podium. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you are still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end your comments and be seated. The first person we have is Ruthie Brown.
Thank you very much. You know, you know the drill. I have a letter. As you, as you appoint your people to the homeless coalition or whatever it's called, this is just an informal letter from, from businesses in my neighborhood that we would like to be kept informed and involved and allowed to sit in if, if time allows for us to participate because decisions might, might affect all of our businesses in our neighborhoods. So beyond that, our neighborhood, South Side, Lower Downtown Alamosa, for some reason, I don't, I don't know that I've read city council minutes ever, but I happened to read them today and I saw that a thank-you email to Excel would be sent as Excel has begun to make improvements to their properties to make the city look better. I guess my question is, first of all, does everyone get an email when they start to make their properties look better? And, you know, for over two years, two years, I have written to Excel, kind of nicely. I've sent them pictures about the power station, transfer station, or whatever it is on Eighth Street where there have been weeds and trash, and more trash and weeds and branches and weeds and trash. And, and then I followed protocol and went on the city page and lodged a complaint. That was, I think, the end of August. Here we are, the middle of October, and nothing was ever done. So all of those kosher weeds, you know, I did a study a while ago. Each, each seed can have, each plant can have up to 1,500 damn seeds. And so when those germinate, it, it just, I, I don't get it. We have, we have laws, we have rules. Who, who has to abide by the rules? And if Excel is beautifying their property, that's, that's great and fine and dandy, but maybe they should start with the weeds because we try. And I'm not saying I'm perfect with my weeds, but I know what weeds I need to get after. But they're, they're right there. And I've written about them. I've paid extra ahead on my bills, so maybe they could hire someone to pull the weeds. But it's, it's bordering on ridiculous. So, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Rowena Martinez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Rowena Martinez, and I just wanted to make city council aware that four years ago, Colorado Springs Toys for Tots came to the valley, and I've been assisting them. And I am now being elected to be the San Luis Valley Marine Toys for Tots for our valley. And so everything will be locally here, and all the gifts that we collect or donations will go to our valley kids. And I just wanted to be aware that we'll be doing all kinds of fundraising. My first one, kickoff one, is going to be with Adam State University this Saturday for their homecoming game. And throughout their sports events, we'll be doing that all the way up until the second week of December. Okay? So I just wanted the city council to know and hope that they will help support Toys for Tots for the valley, and I brought some little gifts for you guys.
Oh, thank you so very much. Ms. Martinez, we have a council member that would like to say something, Ms. Martinez.
Oh, you know?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry.
No, I'll make a comment too there. Yeah, Toys for Tots, it's, it's a Marine Corps organization, and they do a lot for the valley kids, not only for this group, but for the valley, for the whole San Luis Valley.
Yeah, thank you very much for what you're doing for the kids, and thank you for the gifts. Really appreciate it. Councilor Gregor, we're going to turn it back over for a follow-up, so I'll let you go ahead.
And I wanted to do a follow-up on, on Excel. Every year when we go to CML, we have a meeting with Excel, and they update us on a lot of stuff that's going on with their company and stuff. And this year, I pointed out the fact that the hospital had done a lot of, a lot of stuff over there, and they were kind of, they did some work out there, but they were kind of set back in the old time, I guess, so to speak. So I talked to Jerome, who I, I forget his title, and I kind of told him, I says, "We got that place because it's in my district, and we got the, the, the one over on Eighth Street that you mentioned, Ruthie." And he said that they would look into it. Well, that, the other day I went by and I saw they're doing work, so I pointed it out to our city manager, saying, "Hey, look, they must have listened to me because Excel's doing some work out there." And that's why, and they are going to get to those weeds. Hopefully, they, what I wanted them to do is to put those slashes in around that area there on Eighth Street to kind of cover up that stuff. So he says that they would look into it. They didn't promise anything, but I really appreciate the fact that they are, that what they're doing is redoing their fans out there. And I think maybe the reason they're doing that too is the fence is kind of falling down the section, so that's why you saw what you saw on, on the minutes. I was initiated, and I don't know if the city manager wants to say more.
Okay, Heather?
Did you want staff up comment now, or did you want to finish counsel?
Oh.
I was going to talk about the homeless.
That's what I was wondering. I didn't know if because this was handed to us, we needed to read it out loud. No, okay. So, but I do think, yeah, it's really about the development that might be proposed and those kinds of meetings. So yes, Heather, if you could address that, that would be great.
So I don't know what the letter says, so I guess if you want to pass that down. What my comments were going to be in regards to the homeless coalition is, this is a great opportunity to talk about when that group meets and the, and kind of the, that it's a public body. So the, since it is appointed by city council, it is a public body. It's an advisory board, which means every one of their meetings has to be public. It has all the same rules and requirements as city council has. So the agenda has to be posted, it has to be held in an area that's accessible, we have to take minutes, those types of things. And so in regards to people wanting to be involved, it's, it's handled as any other kind of public meeting. We do meet the fourth Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and the public is welcome to attend. Since this group is, we're getting ready to have maybe our third meeting, so at this point in time on the agenda, we don't have a public comment until we kind of have our hands around more of what we're going to be looking at. But probably in the next several months, we're going to talk about adding to the agenda a public comment section. But the public is obviously very welcome to attend. It's a public meeting, and, and listen to what the discussions are and, and those types of things. The other thing is, this group doesn't necessarily have any authority, and I think that clarification is Ruthie was talking about, decisions that might come out of it and, and those types of things. The, the point of the group is to bring stakeholders together to talk about homelessness, to identify maybe areas we're not doing well, areas that we are doing well, and, and how can we fill in some of those gaps, or what changes are needed, and, and those types of things. But they can't force anybody to do anything. So even if this group felt that there should be an agency going after more grants for certain types of housing, it, it can't make that decision. It can just discuss it, identify it, and do those types of things. And so I think this is just a good opportunity to talk about what this group is doing and not doing, what authority they have, and that it is a public meeting, and their agendas are posted, and they meet monthly. Now, we are getting ready to get into the holiday season, so we may have to either adjust some of the meetings, because I believe the one in December falls on Christmas Eve or something, and some stuff like that. So there might be a few adjustments to the, the meeting time over the next few months, but regular meeting is the fourth Tuesday at 6:00 PM. And then Councilor Greg already addressed the, what motivated the thank-you for Excel. And then in regards to the weeds, what I'll do is follow-up of police to see if we can track down that complaint and the status of it, and, and get back with you, Ruthie.
Okay, thank you, Heather, and thank you, Council, for the follow-up. Up next on the agenda, we have consent calendar A. Councilor Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor, I know this is unprecedented, but I just read this letter. Can I address this?
Sure, please.
I know it's a little bit out of order, but in case Ms. Brown leaves. One of the requests in this is that these businesses want to be informed on any development that might be across the lot from Alta Fuels. So from a city perspective, I, I'm, we don't normally take a list of people and send notifications. I'm fine if we want to, it looks like Ruthie Brown is kind of the volunteer leader on this, so if we, if anything's going through the city, we can commit to contacting Ruthie. But I want to make sure from an expectation perspective that there may be meetings that La Puente is having on their property that we're not a part of, and, okay, I just, I want, so if something's coming before the planning commission or city council, we can commit to contacting you. Okay? I just want to make sure that we're clear with, with that communication.
Thank you. Okay, up next on the agenda, under board and commissions, we have the homeless coalition appointments.
On April 3rd, 2019, city council approved resolution number eight, 2019, that established the City of Alamosa Standing Committee on Homelessness, otherwise known as the Alamosa Homeless Coalition. The coalition will seek to understand housing instability and homelessness in our community through discussion and identification of causes, effects, and potential solutions, and to assist in development of strategic partnerships, collaborative responses, and engagement of community resources. On September 18th, 2019, council approved resolution number eighteen, 2019, amending the coalition to include a representative from the housing and to set the position for an initial two-year term. The city received two applications from interested parties who were interviewed on October 2nd and October 16th. I have your ballots for today. If you could please cast your votes. After tallying your votes, Don Mulgarris is appointed to the coalition.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council. All righty. Up next on the agenda, we have under Public Works, Habitat for Humanity, and I believe it's going to be Harry and Audrey.
Hi, I'm Audrey Lu, the Director of Habitat for Humanity. For the past 25 years, Habitat for Humanity has provided low-income housing with families in need in the San Luis Valley. Habitat families have been unable to obtain a conventional mortgage through traditional lending sources. All Habitat's efforts are made possible by the generous donations of land, funds, resources, and volunteers. Habitat homes are constructed with volunteer labor and the applicant families, and then they're then sold with no-profit, zero percent interest mortgages. The mortgage payments are put into the Fund for Humanity, which helps Habitat to build more houses with other Habitat families, the next Habitat families. Our families are hard-working members in the community. They do maintenance at the school district. They serve children in the cafeterias. They take care of the elderly in the nursing homes. Many Habitat children are the first in their families to pursue higher education. And we'd like to thank Council for your consideration of the sponsorship of the fees that we've paid to the city. The home that we are building will provide a household with the dream of homeownership that they never thought possible.
So as usual, Audrey did a great job representing Habitat for Humanity. Historically, the city has waived these fees to help further the vision, the vision, and provide homes to those who otherwise wouldn't be able to obtain affordable housing. The financial impact to the city would be $685 to the general fund, $300, or $3,800 for water sewer taps, and also the plant investment fee.
Thank you all so very much. Okay, Council? Council Gregor?
In the past, the houses that you've built there, they've added to the community. They've cleaned up areas that were once chiccos and stuff, so they've turned into really nice subdivisions. I think it's a great program, and whatever we can do to help these people, and they take care of their properties. I've, I've been around, I've helped, Council's helped working on, on these programs. So I think it's a great, great idea that Council continues to support Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you, Council Gregor. Council Brawls?
Yes, I just want to echo what Council Gregor said. I think Habitat does a great job, and been, I've watched them throughout the years, and the houses they build are great, so, you know, I truly support that, so thank you.
Council Daniel?
I, I really, I totally support Habitat for Humanity, so if there weren't any other comments, I was going to motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for Habitat for Humanity to waive these fees.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would just like to say I thank you all for all the great work you're doing in the community as well. Just keep it up and keep giving families hope by giving them a home. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harry.
The motion carried unanimously.
All righty. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have resolution number 20-2019.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, just a brief roadmap. You've got two items, one after the other on the agenda here relating to the Comfort Inn annexation. Resolution number 20 is a resolution finding that the property is eligible for annexation. And then next up on the agenda will be a second reading in public hearing for ordinance number 21, which is the actual annexation ordinance. So the resolution number 20, which is the item before you now, is a fairly straightforward resolution. Property is eligible for annexation if it shares a one-sixth contiguity with existing city boundaries, and if it shares a community of interest with the city, i.e., it's really appropriate to, to become city urban property. In general, if it does share a one-sixth contiguity, the presumption is that it's eligible. But the reason that we hold a public hearing is to hear from the public to see whether there are any concerns, in particular about the appropriateness and eligibility of this area to be annexed. This has nothing to do with whether the city should annex it in a, in a broader sense. It's just whether the city can annex it. So with that, I guess, Mayor, I would suggest you open the public hearing on eligibility, unless Council had any questions for me.
Okay. Council Gregor?
Well, the way, the way these are scheduled on, on the agenda, you don't want to do the resolution first and then the public hearing, or how?
I do. So the resolution I want to do first, but that requires a public hearing as well. So we have two public hearings scheduled on the agenda. We have a public hearing just on the eligibility, which is what we're doing now, and then we'll have a public hearing and second reading for the ordinance.
Oh, okay. All righty.
So, right, just to make clear, this is the public hearing solely for eligibility.
Okay. So at this time, I would like to open it up for a public hearing for solely for eligibility, eligibility. Anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, feel free to come up to the podium, and do so. Okay? If not, we will close now, close the public hearing, and bring it back to Council.
With that, Mayor, I'll make the motion we pass resolution number 20-2019.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, up next, we have the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number 21-2019.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the juncture at which Council makes a decision as to whether or not it's appropriate to annex this property, and if so, on what terms Council finds it to be appropriate to annex this property. And up on the screen is the annexation plat. This shows the two parcels of land that are proposed to be annexed in, one of them containing the existing Comfort Inn right along County Road 107 there, at the intersection of 107 and Highway 160. And then just to the north of it, another parcel which currently has a residence on it. The annexation petition as amended is to bring these, bring both of these parcels in with a mixed-use zoning. The, the Comfort Inn, a motel, is a use by right in mixed-use zoning, so that's an appropriate zone for that, and obviously, the residence is also a use by right in the mixed-use zoning. Staff has been working closely with Manny Patel, the applicant, and his attorney Carl Keenhold on developing a proposed annexation agreement, which was included in your materials as well, which makes clear that the owner, the developer, will be responsible for constructing any necessary infrastructure regarding sewer for these two properties. Now, these two properties are currently served by City Sewer through a lift station that the developer owns and operates and is responsible for. The agreement contemplates that the owner will be continuing to maintain and be responsible for that lift station until such time as the owner chooses to install a gravity sewer main that would, that would obviate the need for that. But the city's not going to do it, but it's, the city's not going to require the owner to do that on any particular schedule. The city will be providing sewer, I'm sorry, a water main up to the property boundary at Road 107 essentially, because the properties are currently not on city water. And one of the reasons to annex, of course, is to, to get that city infrastructure available to the property. Mr. Patel and his attorney are both here. If Council has any questions for the annexation ordinance, and we do need to conduct a public hearing on this ordinance.
Council Daniel?
Thank you. Eric, I was listening to you. I just want to make sure, we are going to, did you say the city will be responsible for getting it up to their property?
The city will get the, the water main up to the property boundary, not the sewer.
Not the sewer. Thank you.
So.
Hi, good evening.
Go ahead. Okay, so right now, I'm going to open it up for a public hearing. Okay?
Unless Council had any questions for the applicant.
Do you all have any comments of the applicant?
Yeah, who's going to, who's going, who's going to take care of the sewer, or how's that, how's that going to be handled?
So we currently have a lift station of what we've been operating to, you know, take care of the sewer, but eventually for the gravity, you know, sewer line, that's something we'll be taking care of.
Is there a sewer line there?
There is. So if you, on the northern parcel, Track Two, where the mouse is, where that little box is, that's where the lift station is, and there's an existing non-gravity-based sewer line that go, connects back into the city across, I don't know if it's the nipple property or the movie theater property, but that's been in existence, and that's what's been used to provide sewer to both the house that's on the left side of Track Two, as well as to the hotel. And my client is willing to continue to maintain and operate that, and then at some point in the future, if he chooses to have the gravity-based sewer line put in, it will be at his cost.
And that's why there's a lift station which is maintained by us, because it's not a gravity sewer line currently, but I believe it's one of the two property, either Nippon property or, I'm not sure if it is a movie theater, Murphy property, but that's how we are operating for the past several years, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you so much. So at this time, we will open it up for a public hearing. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up and make any comments in regards to this ordinance, please feel free to come up to the podium at this time. Seeing that we have no one coming to the podium, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to Council. Council Gregor?
Kind of following up on, on David's comments. So there's no timeline to do that sewer, as long as they operate the lift station, they can operate that from here on till? Correct, Counselor?
Correct. That's the way it's been running, and staff saw no reason to require anything else to happen. Now, should other properties develop in that area, it may make sense for them to work with, with the Comfort Inn, to share costs of putting in a gravity main, but at this point, that's, there's no reason to disturb what's been serving that area.
Okay, thank you.
As, as long as the Comfort Inn pays for maintaining it, because maintaining the lift stations kind of can become costly.
Thank you.
Council Brawls? Thank you, Council Gregor.
What, what legal liabilities do the city assume by annexing this property?
Well, it, it becomes property within city limits, so the city serves it with police and fire. The city provides street maintenance. I don't, the city currently provides street maintenance there anyway, and maybe Harry knows, but I'm not sure exactly where the city's current street maintenance ends. but I'm not sure exactly where the city's current street maintenance ends. And then, the city, of course, provides water as it does to any properties within city limits. And if the owner chooses to put in a gravity sewer main, the city will take that over and provide sewer the same way it does. But right now, it's just providing sewer through the, through the responsibility of the owner to get it into the sewer's main. Once it's in, once, and this is the situation right now, once that sewage is in the city's main, the city treats it like it does any other property within city boundaries. So, that won't change.
And the city has the capacity from Public Works to, to basically cover that property? And the police has the capacity to do that?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
As with any annexation, the developer pays a, a water annexation fee that's tied to the amount of projected water usage at the, at the property. And so, that's covered in the annexation agreement.
Okay, Counsel Daniel?
I think there are also benefits to having this property in the city limits as well. And so, unless there were other questions, I move to approve Ordinance Number Twenty One, Twenty Nineteen, and authorize this annexation.
I'll second.
We have a motion.
And Counsel Daniel, could you also include in that motion authorizing the city manager to execute the annexation agreement?
Yes. So, I move that we approve Ordinance Twenty One, Twenty Nineteen, and authorize the city manager to, to sign the annexation agreement.
I'll second with that amendment.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Okay?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. Up next, on the agenda, under Finance, a public hearing and second reading of Ordinance Number Twenty Four dash Twenty Nineteen.
Good evening, Counsel, Mayor. I'd like to just point out in Ordinance Twenty Four, Twenty Nineteen, we found out yesterday that our property and casualty insurance is going up more than we anticipated. So, we did, or we will be making a small change, a $10,000 increase for property and casualty insurance. So, that's in the general fund. Otherwise, the ordinance is still the same, appropriating expenses and revenue for fiscal year 2020.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Brawls?
Do you know why the insurance went up? It went up by $10,000?
Because we've had, we've had several claims.
Have we?
Well, and I think the other issue is we had inadvertently lowered it for this year. So, when we did a five percent, we did it off of this year, when we shouldn't have lowered it for this year. So, if we would have put what we should have put this year and gone five percent off of that, that's the other part of the difference.
That's fair, too. Optimism. We were just too optimistic.
Okay, Counsel. Go ahead.
I was going to say, with that, I would make a motion to approve. Or do we have to do something else?
What we're going to do is, I think Counsel Grego had a comment.
And bless you, you got to go into public hearing. I guess, I was going to make some comments, but I don't know if to make them after or before the, this public hearing. I've been getting a lot of calls out there that when people look at this budget, they look at one big sack of money out there. And I wanted the city manager or somebody to, to break down where, a lot of this stuff is already earmarked for different areas, and they don't see that. And it's, it's just, this, you know, you pass this big budget, and people are looking at it and saying, hey, well, why do you guys even need more money with all this big money that you already have? So, I was, I don't know who would break that down and, and explain, just to, I guess, to the common person, where this, where this money is going to, where it, some of it is already earmarked. We can't even touch it and stuff, so.
So, thank you, Charlie. I happen to have some slides that we had prepared for our public outreach on the budget. So, I'm going to put those up real fast. And what you will see is, if, if these are all the expenditures that the city is making, this right here, this light pink, is the dedicated sales tax for the Community Recreation Fund. So, that sales tax can only be used on recreational programming, the rec center, those types of expenditures. This kind of more salmon pink type right here on the, on the bottom left, that is our enterprise fund. And so, that is the expenditures and revenue related to our utility bills. So, water, wastewater, sanitation, and we cannot use those monies for other types of services either. They need to be only for those services. This light blue up here on the top is, we kind of put a bunch of dedicated funds altogether, but it's the Fireman's Pension Fund. It's the debt service fund. It's, it's all those funds that the money has to be dedicated for those types of payments. The Employee Health Fund. So, that's when we withhold money from an employee's paycheck for their premium portion of the health fund. So, it's all dedicated funds and revenues. And so, from a flexibility perspective, if, if we want to use that word, that would be this purple area right here, which we call the general fund. So, it's less than half of what the total expenditures are when they come into the city and, and when the money goes back out. And for some reason, my computer's not, will click. When you look at our general fund, a majority of it you will see is from sales tax. We do charge some of the other divisions overhead, because, for example, our trash sanitation does use finance. They do use HR, some of those types of things. We receive about almost five percent from property tax. You can see the state grants, government miscellaneous franchise fees, state highway user, court fines, charges for services. So, a majority of where we get our revenue is that sales tax. And then, that's, so I, I use the term flexibility lightly, because there's a lot of competition for these funds. You've got our legal department, municipal court, city manager, finance, our IT. You have a big chunk for public safety, which includes police admin, police operations, support services, and fire. So, this is all of our public safety here. Here's our street maintenance. We've been doing a lot of outreach related to that. So, this is our street maintenance. But we also have our parks maintenance, cemetery fleet. So, there is a lot of competition for that, less than fifty percent of the pie that, that comes into the city. And staff tried to work really hard on grants and other creative ways to bring in funding that alleviates that competition. But there's, there's a lot of needs out there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I appreciate that you explaining it, because to the average person out there, it's just one big bag of money.
Yeah.
And let's go get it. I said, no, I said, it doesn't work that way. It's already taken apart, and part of it goes here, part of it goes there. So, I appreciate that, and I hope that this can get out, so people can understand that it's not just one big bag of money out there.
I'll check. I know in the past, we've put this presentation on the website. I'm not sure if we've remembered to do it this year. So, let me check on that, and we can always make sure this is available on the website, where we also have the budget available as well. And I almost forgot about this, and, and I'm, so I'm glad I, I just said that. When we had the, the Meet the Candidate Forum, there was a very interesting question that was presented to, to those of you sitting up there, which was, do you believe the city budget should be transparent? And I found it a very interesting question, because while there could be confusion on how to access it, I don't know how it could be more transparent, because the budget that's put online and in the library has every single line item. And then, on a monthly basis, you receive expenditure reports of every single expenditure that's made. So, it could be that we need to do a better job of how to access this information and kind of what it means, because it's complicated. There's no doubt about that. But as far as the transparency question, every single expenditure and, and intake of revenue is tracked on a monthly basis and presented to Counsel attached to the agenda item. And then, the, the annual budget has every single line item. So, I think for an educational perspective, it's always good to help remind the public about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Grego, and thank you, Heather. Okay, so, at this time, I will open it up a public hearing for Ordinance Number Twenty Four dash Twenty Nineteen. Do you have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to this ordinance? Okay, seeing, if so, please come up to the podium.
Well, since it's an endless bag of money, let me give you just a little bit of history. A year or so ago, was able to get some volunteers to build a handicap ramp for Peyton Sanchez at his house. And we went from a couple steps up to the bottom of the ramp. And we were all so proud, and we were all, just thought we really did something great. But after a few months, and if you, if you don't live this, if you don't live this every day, like any family with a special-needs child, you don't always get it. And so, it was easy to get down the ramp, but then you hit dirt or gravel. And, and so, as Peyton got older and his wheelchair got heavier, it became dangerous. And so, this year, I was fortunate to have a couple of contractors who had to do some community service, and a light bulb went off. And it was like, wow, I'm not going to make you guys work in the garden. I'm going to, I'm going to have you help build a pad, so Peyton can get out of his chair safely. He can get out and into the vehicle safely with his mom, and where his mom won't get hurt and stuff. So, meanwhile, Peyton came by the store today, and he's such an inspiration for everybody. So, it's always, Ruthie, can we, can we go wash dogs at the Valley Humane League on Friday? And I'm like, yep, we'll, we'll make it happen. And, and then, he talked about raising money for an actual wheelchair swing. And, and I don't know how, I didn't bring up this conversation. This was Mr. Sanchez. So, the thing about Peyton's Playball Park, if you go out there, and I went out there today. I hadn't been out there before. I thought it was cool. It was named after him. But you know what? He can't, he can't even get to the swing. And he can't, his mom can't take him to the swing by herself. The wheelchair, you, you can't get it up and over the lip, and you can't get it off the ramp down into the sand without the, the kid fearing for his life. And so, you don't know that stuff unless you live it every day. So, I guess, as we think about money and budgets, and Peyton, Peyton never asks for anything. He just maybe wants to start raising money for that, for a, a real, actual, live, heavy-duty wheelchair swing, where anyone in a wheelchair can back the chair up and swing. They're only $40,000. And, but seems like we could do that, you know, with all the grants we write and all that type of stuff, that maybe Kaboom, maybe Kiwanis, maybe, you know, Andy knows who to contact or something. But the playground out at the ball fields was a good idea. It was a great idea. But it, it doesn't go far enough for that young man, and, and he's always thinking of kids after him. And the other thing that would be absolutely fabulous would be if it could go in Cole Park, where so many other activities and family activities are, that we could make it really prominent, where visitors to our town would, would see it and stuff. So, anyway, I'm, I'm game, if, if anyone else would be game, to help him raise some money, you know, dollar at a time. And I guess also, the police need more money. That's how I feel. And also, I wish the city had money to hire someone to take care of plants, know how to cut them back, know when to water, know how to hold, know how to hold, that's a song, know how to hold them, whatever. But in my humble opinion, until we do that, and until we take that pressure off parks crews who are overloaded, we'll keep redoing gardens and redoing gardens. And I didn't have time to get my pictures done to bring them to you. So, look forward to two weeks from tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to this ordinance? Okay, if not, we will now close this public hearing. Bring it back to Counsel. Counsel Brawls?
No, excuse me. I spent quite a bit of time analyzing the budget and appropriations. And I've asked our city manager to make some changes to the format of some of the reports, which he's done. So, it's made easier to understand. But I am, while, you know, while there's a large amount of money, there's a lot of needs to run a city this size. And I appreciate the dedication and the work that goes with the staff and the finance director to keep, to keep everything even keel. And I do say, I think...
We try.
I think the city is in a good financial and sound position, and I appreciate that. And I think everybody in the city works towards that, and I really appreciate that. So, I think I'm to the point where I understand budget about the seventy-five percent level. Because city accounting or governmental accounting is pretty complex, and it's hard for the individual to understand it. So, I just want to make that comment. I congratulate staff for working as diligently as they do to keep the budget the way it is.
We have department heads that are very tight-fisted with their budgets. So, that's helpful for all of us.
Thank you very much. Okay, Counsel Grego?
If there's no further comments or questions, I'll make the motion that we approve Ordinance Number Twenty Four dash Twenty Nineteen.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please start voting. Okay?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Judy. Next, we have a public hearing and second reading of Ordinance Number Twenty Five dash Twenty Nineteen.
This ordinance is the city's pay plan that we use as a guideline for everyone that's hired. It's put in a grade, and then, their pay is metered out according to that pay grade. It's, was a paid study done, I think, in 2015, so that we would be economic, like our, our wages would be in scale with other cities of our size. And with the minimum wage increase, there was a lot of work put into this pay plan, so that there was not so much compression between the grades. And so, I did some, I was just thinking about it today. Actually, the, our city pay role is a big portion of the budget. But it's the economy or the multiplier that you use is for every wage that you pay, every dollar is multiplied by six. So, that makes it, it comes, comes out of the city, but it come, we pay it out of the city, but it comes back to us a lot of it. So, just, did you have any questions now that you had a couple of weeks to look through the pay plan?
Any question, Counsel? No, we're good. Thank you. Okay, Counsel. Let's see. We don't have to open this one up for a public hearing, do we, Eric?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, at this time, we will open it up for a public hearing of Ordinance Number Twenty Five dash Twenty Nineteen. We have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments? Please feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, seeing that no one is coming up, I will now close the public hearing and return it back to Counsel. Okay, Counsel?
If there's no comments, I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve Ordinance Number Twenty Five dash Two, Two Thousand Nineteen.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Okay?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Judy. All right, up next, we have the first reading of Ordinance Number Twenty Seven dash Twenty Nineteen.
This is an ordinance. We have an opportunity to refinance some of our existing debt. There are two components. The first is the City Hall complex, which is City Hall and the Police, Police Public Safety Building. The other component would be the augmentation plan financing that we did in 2017, and we used the Alamos Ranch as collateral. So, my colleague is Mr. Troy Bernberg. He's from Northland Securities, and he has been helping us with trying to put this together. What, what, if we are able to do this refinancing... If we are able to do this refinancing, we'd be able to use just the City Hall and the Public Safety Building as collateral, and we'd be able to release the ranch, the Alamosa Ranch, completely from any debt. So we'd really like to do this. And then in addition to that, we would be able to realize savings of about $725,000, more or less, depending on how the offering goes in December. So the savings wouldn't be realized all in the first year. It would be realized over the lives of the debt, which one is 11 years and one is 12. So it would be really a good thing for the city to be able to do if counsel approves. I put on your places there, and I marked with a little highlighter the page that shows the savings, just so you could see it in black and white. It's actually, it's page number six on the handout that I gave you. And the savings we'd start to realize in 2020. So, and it's about between $75,000 and $80,000 a year. Part of that savings would be in the general fund and part of it would be in the enterprise fund because the ranch augmentation plan is in the enterprise fund. So it's about, not quite 50/50, but it's fairly close. So each fund would recognize about $45,000 to $50,000 in savings in that in interest. Plus, Troy was able to negotiate the fees down a little bit for the trustee fees and those things too. So it's not a lot of savings, but every dollar helps, so.
Okay, thank you. David, Counsel Brawls.
Yeah, can this, can payments be prepaid?
Yes. Typically, what you see with these financings, Counselor, just like the one that we are refinancing that had a 10-year prepayment date, that we are anticipating a nine-year prepayment date for the refinancing.
Okay, when you say savings, you mean that the payment goes down?
Correct. Just like refinancing your mortgage.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Go. Any other comments of Julia Troy? Counselor.
I was just going to say, if there's no other further comments, I'll approve on first reading ordinance number 27-2019 as proposed, authorizing the financing of the leasing purchase agreement known as the 2010 COP and the 2017 COP, and set for public hearing on November 6, 2019, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter as a matter may be heard.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
You're welcome.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Please.
I know a lot of times people get sensitive when we're talking about the ranch and might be wondering why do we want to release that from the debt? What you might remember, this isn't, I'm just watching the screen, sorry. What you might remember from the ranch management plan and the public outreach is there was significant interest in trying to do protection, especially for the land along the river, and going a little bit into it enough so that maybe if we can get enough from a conservation easement that can be reinvested into the property. And so some of that property was locked in with this financing. And so when we talk about the ability to get it out from under that, that's the only plan we have, is to then we can now pursue looking at that conservation easement. And again, everything will come back before counsel, before anything's final on that.
Thank you for that update, Heather. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have under police, second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 26-2019. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start this one off, and the chief will actually provide the substance. I'll just provide the format. So as we discussed on first reading, this is, there is a model traffic code now that's been promulgated by the Colorado Department of Transportation. It used to be promulgated by the State Patrol. So the one we've been operating under is the 2010 plan, which was the most recent up until this 2018 change, which is when it changed from State Patrol to Department of Transportation. The staff's recommendation is to adopt the model traffic code with changes as expressed in the ordinance, pretty much that do Alamosa-specific things like enforce our no bicycle zones in the central business district. We remove the whole Section 17 out of the model code relating to fees and fines because we have our own set of fees and fines and that kind of thing. And that's staying the same from the way we currently do it. There are two changes, as we discussed at first reading, for you to consider, one of which is adoption of the way that bicycles and electric scooters approach and deal with intersections. And the other is to establish a 20 mile an hour speed limit in parking lots. The ordinance as written contains provisions that respond to the Colorado Legislature's invitation to municipalities, if you will, to regulate bicycles and scooters differently from the way motor vehicles are regulated with respect to being able to slow down to a reasonable speed, but then roll through stop signs, and to be able to come to a stop at red lights, but then proceed through the intersection with the light being red if it is safe to do so. And it also contains a provision for a 20 mile an hour speed limit in parking lots on private property. Staff's recommendation is the second alternative, which is to delete the stuff dealing with bicycles and electric scooters from the ordinance so that we would not make special provision for allowing them to roll through stop signs and proceed through red lights. But that, of course, is counsel's prerogative. The chief has the substance on why that's staff's recommendation. If you want to hear it again, or you can open the public hearing.
Okay. Counsel, do any of you feel that you need to hear chief's comments again because he did make comments the last, I mean, the last time? Okay? No?
Are they different? I guess, I think if you wouldn't mind.
Are my comments different from last time? No, they're not.
I'm just wondering.
There's been a lot of conversations, though, so if you just want to recap it, that might be good.
If you wouldn't mind, that would be awesome.
Sure. We can go over the bicycle rules first, and why I feel that that is something that we currently do not need to change. I still believe, and I strongly believe, that that is a safety concern, both for motorists and for the bicyclists, to be using, as Eric indicated, stoplights as stop signs and stop signs as a yield. I think we'll find ourselves dealing with issues we probably shouldn't have to be dealing with right now. Plus, it's an educational item. It takes the community time to understand how these rules work. As far as establishing a speed limit within private parking lots, I think that is something that we need, also another safety concern. Currently, as I explained last time, the only violation that we can cite, there's a handful of violations, such as unsafe backing or improper backing. We have some parking violations that we can also cite, DUIs, reckless driving, and careless driving. We cannot monitor strictly on speed. That's why you hear the careless driving is our catch-all. If we do, if we approve something like this, it will give us some better opportunity to enforce and make these parking lots safer for our pedestrians that are walking through or even driving through these. And I'm not, so specifically, I just want you to understand, when I said last time, 40 miles an hour, we have had individuals doing that speed. It sounds fast, but you have to think about the parking lots they're doing these in. Plus, you have to look at the time of day. Most of the time, it's not eight to five. It is after hours. Any questions?
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Okay, Counsel Daniel.
Sorry. And so, and you believe, so, obviously, if they're doing 40, but you believe 20 miles an hour is reasonable in those larger parking lots?
Yes, ma'am, I sure do.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so at this time, we will now open up the public hearing for ordinance number 23-2019. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, please come up to the podium. Feel free to start making your comments.
Yes, Mayor Coleman and counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I apparently misspoke last time because the chief and Counselor Brawls both spoke about bicyclists blasting through red lights. The safety stop is yielding at a stop sign and stopping at a red light and proceeding when safe. As you know, I'm in favor of the safety stop bill. It's been used for a long time in Idaho and has been found to be a public benefit. So my feeling is, if you feel that bicyclists need to come to a stop, stop their forward motion at a stop sign, even when there's no other traffic, then, you know, leave it out. If you believe that a bicyclist should sit at a red traffic light and wait until a vehicle comes along and triggers the light for them when there's no traffic coming rather than proceeding through that red light, then go ahead and drop it out. But if you feel that what bicyclists tend to do should be made legal, then I would ask you to leave in the bicycle safety stop. Thank you. And I would hope that maybe, chief, you'd start stopping and at least issuing warnings to bicyclists that are breaking the law. I think that's far more, would make bicycling far more safe than leaving this out of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't roll your eyes at me. So I got, and I hadn't looked at this at all, but when I deal with Willie Wade every day on his bike, and it would be very complicated for him to try and figure out when he can stop at a stop and, or a red light and go through, or when he can't, it would be inviting disaster. That's just what we deal with every day. So I would encourage, I don't know how the traffic things trigger lights and things like that, but I just know for someone like him, they need to follow the same laws I do in my car and stuff. And I guess my next question is, on the scooters and whatever they're called, motorbikes and stuff, are they supposed to be in the bike lane? Are they supposed to be in the car? I mean, they go fast and total disregard for anybody else. So I guess I need to know when we should call them in, when we shouldn't, what they're supposed to be doing.
Okay. Do we have anyone else? Have any comments? Responses? Okay. If not, we would now close this public hearing and bring it back to counsel. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So I think that this is a tough issue for both the reasons that Mr. Thompson and Ms. Brown spoke about. We have people who absolutely know how to ride their bicycle safely, understand the laws and how to yield at stop signs and stoplights and ride appropriately. And we have other people who don't understand how to do that and could get confused. And I think where I struggle, as a very novice bike rider and scooter rider, by the way, I don't, I want to be, I want to follow all the same rules because I want the cars to know what I'm doing, because I'm not an excellent rider. And so I am in support of the staff recommendation of the stops. The question, though, I have for the chief is, so if a light doesn't change and a bicyclist is there, I don't want them waiting for 10 minutes for a car to come either. And so I really think we need to be reasonable about those kinds of things, and I would assume our officers are. I guess that would be my thought.
Absolutely. Can I comment on that just real quick?
Sure.
You know, the guys have discretion, the guys and gals that work for the city PD. And I believe they use that pretty lenient on what they handle and don't handle. We all understand that the lights may not change if it is just a bicyclist. So we will allow them to proceed as long as it is safe.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, any Gregel? No?
No, I was going to ask the same question.
Okay, all right, good deal. She's reading your mind today. Counsel Brawls.
My concern as far as allowing people to go through a stoplight or, you know, a red light is really the age. I mean, a 12, 13, 14-year-old bicyclist, I think that's too dangerous. They're not experienced, they lack judgment, they don't look carefully. Now, a 50-year-old bicyclist or a 60-year-old, they have a lot better judgment and they're a lot more careful. So I mean, I feel better for them, but really, it's our youth. They just blow through these stop signs even today. So I just think we have to be careful and watch our youth. And the major factor would be to protect them.
Okay, Counsel Gregel.
One comment, and I think, I don't know if it's already been talked about, is the educational part of this. You know, that's going to be very valuable because if they have to stop, and I could see Counselor Brawls' comment, you know, they need to stop. So I don't know how we're going to go ahead and educate these bike riders and stuff. I'm sure you have something put together, chief, so, thank you.
I just want to, when we talk education, regardless if we include this or if we don't include it, one of my goals, but it's been on the back burner, is as a city, we just need to do better from an education perspective, both for motorists and cyclists. It's just, it's hard when you have a lot of other pressing issues and limited staff. But it's not something we have to reinvent the wheel. Thankfully, we've got some of our front-range communities that have very established educational programs. It's a matter of getting it going. And so I just want to own from a community perspective, we're not where we need to be from an education, regardless if we included or not included in this.
Thank you. Okay, counsel. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve upon second reading ordinance number 26-2019 with the recommended alternative amendment. We delete the proposed subsection 1412, parenthetical 11.5, that allows bicycles and electric scooters to roll stop signs and proceed through red lights.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right. Up next, we have under city manager legal, the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 23-2019.
Thank you, Mayor. As I indicated when this came before counsel on first reading, this is really a cleanup ordinance to correct inadvertent attachment of the wrong or incorrect legal description when the city annexed 60 acres just south of Airport Road out by the airport. So we do need to conduct a public hearing, but this should be fairly non-controversial, I would assume.
Thank you, Eric. So at this time, we will open up a public hearing for ordinance number 23-2019. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, please come up to the podium. Okay, seeing that we have no one coming to the podium, I would now close the public hearing and bring it back to counsel. Counsel Gregel.
Since this is more of a housecleaning type of ordinance, I'd make the motion that we pass ordinance number 23-2019.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please start voting. Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Counsel Gregel.
We had our Recreation Advisory Board meeting last Tuesday. Some of the stuff that was talked about, one big area where, I'm glad she's still here, Ruthie Brown, she's going, the Centennial Park Enhancement Veterans Memorial flag. You guys, that's that little park that's right there by the market, the market downtown? It's right in the middle of the downtown. What she's proposing is-
Ruby Slipper and Oscars. It's where it's near.
Thank you. Thank you. She's proposing on putting some veteran flags around, there's already markers there, so she's just gonna enhance it. So the board unanimously approved that. Some of the other areas that were talked about, and yesterday they had the ribbon cutting for the for the park, and I think maybe Andy's gonna talk about it or not, but other project updates, where's the Montana Azul Park, the Pelican Trail, the Malt Trail, BB fishing, North River Pavilion Boat Ramp. And then an area that I wanted to make sure everybody is aware of is the ice, the ice rink preseason pass sale. They're having that sale from now, from September twenty-fifth to the twenty-first of October. Get a ten percent off of any ice rink or dual family recreation. The hours are gonna change now in November, Monday through Friday, they'll go from six AM to ten PM, Friday from six AM to six PM, Saturday from seven AM to six PM, and Sunday from twelve PM through six PM. And these minutes are all available wherever wants to do.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Okay, Counsel Hensley?
Yeah, we, last week, I think it was, did marketing board, and they're doing a lot of great stuff. It's pretty exciting. But one of the things is they did do a request for proposals to see what the cost would be to to take down the motorway. And so we'll see where that goes, and if those prices come in at a reasonable price, that potentially that idea of moving forward with taking down the motorway.
Thank you. Counsel Hensley? Okay. Next, we have our staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. As Harry comes up, we just have two different ones, one that Harry's gonna review. Just more of an FYI, there's gonna be some activity in in some of our neighborhoods, and we want to make sure you're just aware of it in case you get any calls.
Thank you.
So just north of the high school there, where West Lakewood would continue through, Regis and Sarah approached us a few months ago in an effort to submit a subdivision for River Trace Two, let's see, Phase Seven. And that would be the next housing development to the west of Sarah Lane. As staff looked at the subdivision, we kind of looked back and considered the connectivity and the growth with the missing piece between the existing West Lakewood, yeah, Phase One, and then the the new West Lakewood to the west. So we have that missing little section there in in the redlined area. You know, that's kind of always been something that had been talked about and identified as staff deemed necessary, they would install it. So after some planning and some discussion, they've gone, they've gone ahead and hired a contractor, and they're gonna start, actually, they have started putting in the utilities and soon to follow the roadway, weather permitting. So we'll see that connection. It's certainly important for connectivity EMS services, and then it also provides a little better access to that open space to the north. So one of the things that we we look at is the growth to the west, where Road one oh seven, the Comfort Road, Comfort Inn Road, is that we have really no thruway roads that direction as Clark had a dead ends in the Walmart subdivision area, and then Carroll runs into that field. So as we look at it, our only thru road to the north would be West Lakewood as it continues to develop in the future, so.
Thank you, Harry. Heather? Thank you very much, Harry.
Thank you, Mayor. My update tonight is a little bit of an unfortunate update. I was reading the the paper today and noticed that there was a letter to the editor from Don Cannon, who has identified himself as a La Puente board member. And as part of that letter to the editor makes the assertion that because of the downtown hotel, we are displacing seventeen at-risk families. And goes on to try to detail the lack of parking and and so those those types of things. It's unfortunate on on many counts because, one, this is an area that's part of the negotiation, and so in order to try to apply public pressure to counsel with misinformation on a negotiating item, in this ways disappointing. The other part is just, it's not accurate. And then so I will be doing a short letter from myself as the city manager to try to correct that information, but to make sure you have this information. The ideal design for the downtown hotel currently would maintain thirty public parking spots in the parking lot. And we're going to do a count, but when I look on Google Earth and try to count it from that way, there's over twenty spots on street parking in addition. So that's probably over fifty spots for those seventeen at-risk individuals. So there's plenty of parking there still. If negotiations do not go well, because again, Manny is still trying to negotiate with La Puente, and if if he's not able to secure a deal, it would force him to do Plan B, which means we would have to bring more parking to the table, which then is driven by La Puente forcing that issue. So that would reduce the parking, those thirty spots that would have normally been available, but there's still over the twenty that's still available on the on-street parking. And so it's disappointing. I I've tried to have conversations with the board and with Lance to explain that there's never been any promises dedicating that parking. It's a public asset, and it's something that the city can do with if they feel it's in the best interest of the public. And they seem to just feel a sense of ownership that they shouldn't feel. And it's unfortunate that they they took that route with the letter to the editor. So I will make sure that we get the accurate counts of the parking. He's indicating people are gonna have to walk three blocks with their groceries and kids and and those types of things, which just isn't accurate. So we'll make sure to get that out as soon as possible.
Thank you, Heather. I think it's very important that you do follow through and then provide the correct information because misinformation misinforms our community, and we cannot allow for our community to take misinformation as truth. So thank you for doing that, and you have the council's support to move forward with doing that. Thank you. Okay. All righty. Counsel comments? Any counsel, Counsel Daniel?
I'll go, I'll go fast. But I I just wanted to remind everybody that this weekend is Adam State's homecoming, and so very excited about that. Good luck, Adam State. And really thank the staff again for doing the budget. I think that that was, it's always a huge lift, and I think it's gonna serve us well. I'm very excited about freeing up the ranch property with this refinance, and I think that that's going to also serve us well. And as we were talking about freeing up the ranch, the new annexation of the Comfort Inn coming in, and hearing about, I know it has been, and I'm I'm not putting you on the spot, Andy, but I know we've been talking about a wheelchair accessible swing for a while and that there were, we were looking at some things a couple, I know, a couple of years ago. And so I just think Ruthie's point is still valid. I think she brought it up the last time when we were talking about it. And it's not something that I want to fall off our Parks and Rec radar. I know there's a lot going on there. But as we look at getting grants, and we know Andy's a whiz at that, and so, like, in continuing to do that, it's not something I want us to keep pushing on the back. And so thank you again for bringing it up. I appreciate it. And then really, the last reminder is that your ballots went out this week, or going out this week if you haven't got them, so please remember to vote.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Daniel. Counsel Gregel?
There was an email that's that somebody was questioning when Veterans Day Parade was supposed to happen. Was that for a committee that you're on, Heather? Anyway, Veterans Day Parade always falls on the eleventh, November eleventh, eleventh day, eleventh hour. And we'll be having it back here right behind, we'll be setting up about ten o'clock right behind Bill Clark. Our permit says, gives a precise some time it starts, but we'll have our ceremony downtown. Everybody's welcome to participate in the parade. Bring your floats, bring your bands, whatever. We always invite counsel and other elected officials to sit on their pass and review and stand, so we'd like, it falls on a Monday, so hopefully we can get somebody there, but I just thought I'd I'd point that out. One other thing that I left out of committee reports is that the first roller skate season is in the books. Season one, one thousand one hundred and forty-two users. So I thought I'd say that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Okay, any other comments, Counsel?
Can I just, on that roller skating, it would not have been possible without the donations for the the funds for those roller skating, those roller skates. And so we had multiple groups that donated and and allowed us to buy that. So it was unanticipated. We didn't realize we'd be able to start doing the roller skating that quickly. So, you know, thanks to staff on on staffing it and getting it organized, but then also the community coming together and making those donations.
Yeah, and I would like to end with saying, I would like to thank the city staff and department heads for all of your hard work in getting the budget prepared for us. It takes a lot of work, a lot of time, and just really appreciate that. And then I would like to thank Parks and Recs and and city staff as well for the Riparian Park ribbon cutting yesterday, and Andy, thank you for the talking points as well. I think a lot of people are gonna get a lot of use out of that park. And that's all I have. And if we don't have any other comments, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.